Okay, thank you and welcome back to the Shaker League of Women Voters Candidates Forum. Again, I'm Leigh Tucker, your moderator, and this panel is the candidates for the Shaker Heights Board of Education. Shaker School Board has five members with staggered four-year terms. Tonight, we will hear from four candidates running for two openings on the board. The three other board members have terms that will be expiring in two years. School Board members do not have wards or neighborhoods. They each serve the community at large. The school district includes all of municipal Shaker Heights plus a portion of the city of Cleveland around Shaker Square. Board members oversee annual expenditures of about $130 million. Board members supervise two employees, the superintendent and the treasurer. Board members generally have two board meetings/work sessions each month plus community meetings. There is no salary, although members may be reimbursed for expenses. Members serve as volunteers, and this is true for less than 4% of the school boards in Ohio. Each candidate will make an opening statement of two minutes, followed by a question-and-answer session from the audience. Responses to the questions and answers will be one minute. We'll try to adhere strictly to the timelines again. Each candidate will give the one-minute closing statements. The timers, again, they're down front. They will give a 30-second warning, followed by a stop. We'll let you finish your thoughts, but try to stick to the timeline. We'll start the opening statements with Ms. Andrea Boyd, who was chosen to go by lots first, and then we'll go in order. So we will start with Ms. Andrea Boyd.
Thank you so much. I just want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us today. I am very excited to speak with you. My name is Andrea Boyd. I have lived in Shaker Heights for 13 years with my two kids. I am a boomeranger, so I graduated from Shaker Heights. I moved away to Henderson, Nevada, and then my husband and I moved back. We are both Shaker Heights High School alumni. I'm class of '98, he's class of '97. No, we did not date, but we did go to high school together. I am excited to be a part of this and just to be a part of the board in which I used to attend school. That is major. I mean, I am the best and the brightest of what Shaker can put out. It is what it is. But I am excited. I sit on the Shaker Heights Development Corporation Board. I also sit on the City of Shaker Heights D E I Committee. I am very active. I was PTO president for the high school last year. I also helped to facilitate Shaker Makers and founded it with Julie Kaufman Julie at Fernway. She kept it going, so I appreciate her for that. If any of your children have went through that program, it's a great program. And I'm just excited, really, really excited, to just be here and to share my experience and knowledge base with the community. So I also work for the Ohio Minority Business Development Agency. It's a department within the U.S. Department of Commerce. So I help to -- businesses to scale and grow. That could be globally, it could be internationally, but one of the things that we also do is we help with large projects. I'm a community review group committee member for the Progressive Field Project downtown. They are expanding. I'm also working with Rock Hall for their expansion. So I'm excited to dig my teeth into -- and my nails into this project, definitely.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Pamela Scott.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here. I am Pam Scott. I have lived in the Moreland community for 24 years. So my husband and I have four boys that have gone through the system, 29, 23, and 18-year-old twins that just graduated this year. I became interested with running for the board because there are decisions that are going to be made, and made for communities like Moreland. And far too often, for the community members of Moreland, we haven't been involved in the decision-making process. There has been a lot of things that has happened to us and not with us. So I've looked at this as an opportunity to make sure that all voices are heard in Shaker. All voices are considered in Shaker. All families are considered in Shaker. One of my priorities is equity, making sure that everyone, every individual, every group, every teacher, every principal, our superintendent has what they need to be successful. Not a cookie-cutter type of approach, not a cookie-cutter type of strategy, but making sure that we address the needs of the individuals by giving them resources and human support. Additionally, I am looking forward to support the board with making sure that we have effective communication. The board has done a good job with communicating, but we need to do better with making sure that we communicate with everyone and making sure that they understand what is going on. And not only understand, but have a two-way communication system so that we're not just coming to the community asking for help when we need to pass something. Additionally, my low-hanging fruit, when my kids graduated, I was cut off from the communication. So I vow and I will ensure that anyone that has non-school-aged children can have an opportunity to have information from the district and the school in which they want.
Thank you. Ms. Laura Way Klein? Klein, I'm sorry.
Hi. Members of the League of Women Voters, thank you for the invitation to join you today to discuss the future of our beloved Shaker Heights City Schools. I stand before you not only as a candidate for school board, but also as a proud product of this community and its schools, a devoted parent, and a longtime resident. Professionally, I spent more than two decades as a professional fundraiser, understand the intricacies of infrastructure projects, budgeting and finance, and how to develop effective education curriculum. My candidacy is based on three core principles: transparency, accountability, and opportunity, and I'd be happy to expand on these during the Q and A part. Some people try to paint this upcoming election as a binary choice, but the reality is much more nuanced. I firmly believe that the path forward is having the courage to engage in difficult conversations and the confidence to ask hard questions about the details both behind closed doors and in public. And focusing attention solely on the ballot measure distracts attention and conversation about real problems happening right now. Recently, your League Analysis Committee released its recommendation to the board regarding the upcoming school funding ballot issue. I agree that our buildings are in need of major renovations, and an expanded pre-K program will provide more opportunities for work and parents and their children. I also agree the need for stronger fiscal accountability and citizen oversight. I, too, have had trouble reconciling these items to personally support the ballot initiative, but understand the League's qualified support. So I stand here before you as possibly the only candidate who can assuage your concerns. There is a broken relationship among the board, administration, and its finance and audit committee. Current plan is overly complicated, opaque, and contains no mechanisms for financial oversight. If passes, we need to elect candidates who will just not replace existing board members, but challenge the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doug Wang.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Doug Wang. Holly and I have been Shaker residents for 38 years. We sent four kids through the Shaker Schools and two moved back recently to raise their four kids who will be entering the schools soon. My handout has my CV for your review. Let me tell you while I'm running. Shaker Schools will always have challenges, so we need to work on many things at the same time. We need to pass the levy and keep moving forward, but we also need more skill on the board to make sure we do it right. I'm running because my years of board experience, 30 years in the financial services industry and temperament will make a difference for the Shaker Schools. Last year, I started paying closer attention when it seemed like the district was considering building plans that had no chance for passage. Kurt Miller and I met and sketched out a building plan that we believe the community could support. Our first email laid out the following four points: Create universal pre-K for ages three and four. Equitably renovate all elementary school buildings to a similar standard as Fernway. Renovate Woodbury to become the new middle-years school for grades six through eight. Defer the decision on the high school for now. We took these ideas and met with community leaders, political leaders, school board members, and teachers and found broad support. We encouraged them to write the board and administration to try to move things forward. In the end, the plan the board adopted aligned largely with what we were calling for, and to make sure that the things we identified, pre-K access, long-term facilities planning, and better financial management, would be implemented well, I decided to run to help oversee these plans. Dr. Glassner's tenure has been challenging. The board let him lose credibility by allowing him to advance building plans that could never be passed without years of discussion and to implement detracking at perhaps the worst time, right after the pandemic with all the lost learning and behavioral issues. I believe our superintendent needed more guidance and oversight from the board. The most important thing I learned from my years of board experience is how to help my CEO be more effective. I believe the greatest challenge for the schools, though, is bringing a sense of belonging to our students, teachers, administrators, parents, and community members. It is important that everyone feels welcomed, known, included, supported, and connected. I will work to make that a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first question, some of you guys touched on this in your opening statement, do you support the district's school funding request on the November ballot? Why or why not? We'll start with Ms. Boyd.
Sure. This is a decision I really grapple with. I endorsed as of Friday, and I think I did a lot of due diligence when it came to trying to figure out what my core issues were. At the end of the day, what I want is, I want for every and all families that would like to have pre-K to have pre-K. And I don't want them to have to worry about how they're going to pay for it. That tends to be an issue. Also, I had a lot of calls about people being able to afford the actual bond, the levy that's coming. They just didn't know how they would be able to do that. And I am a person that I think about others before I think about myself. Sometimes you need to just step back and you need to really look at exactly what the core issues are and then go from the heart. Go from the heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
Yes, I support. And I'm supporting because of the fellas that are sitting here, the football team that's sitting on the floor and sitting up front, and the teachers that are here. Our students can't wait for us to get it right. Our teachers can't wait for us to get it right. Right now, there are real issues that are happening in our school buildings that need to be addressed. There are real concerns about making sure that students come to school ready. There are real concerns about how we're going to use our facilities and how to maintain them. So we can't wait, and our students can't wait, for us to fight it out and get it right. They deserve quality school buildings where they can come in and have environments that are conducive to learning.
Thank you. Ms. Way Klein? I'm going to get your name right.
That's okay. No worries. I'm going to say this in two parts. Personally, I'm not for it, but it's immaterial to my run for candidacy for the school board, and I'll tell you why. We want somebody at the table who's going to ask hard questions. Do you think that if I got elected and the bond passed that somehow I'd say, "You can't spend the money"? It's ridiculous. You want people at the table who are going to ask hard questions, who've had experience with infrastructure projects, and will challenge a lot of the conversation at the table.
Thank you. Mr. Wang?
Yes, I support it. I think that between the long time we've spent developing this plan and as I describe how we got here, kind of like Winston Churchill described Americans, they'll do the right thing in the end after they've tried everything else. I think we ended up in the right place, and I think that we should, you know, take that opportunity to move forward. We are getting 37% of most of our expenditures. That's likely to be the highest number we're going to get. We need to move forward. The climate change is not going to wait for us. There was an article in the New York Times today about schools struggling with climate change. We have to start moving. This is a long-term project. We can't wait.
Thank you. The next question is about detracking. I will give you a definition of what detracking is, and then I'll ask the question. So detracking places students of varying abilities in the same classroom. Educators employ differentiated instructions to challenge all students. They tailor teaching methods and materials to accommodate diverse learning styles and paces so each student is appropriately challenged. Group activities, peer learning, and individual projects also address varying abilities. That's what the definition of detracking is, for those who didn't know, like myself. So the question regarding detracking is, what is your opinion of detracking? Is it a good philosophy? Is the Shaker approach a good one? This is a -- I'm going to ask it for -- I'm going to repeat it. Is the Shaker approach a good one? Are we executing the plan well? And what would you change? I'm going to start with Ms. Scott. Would you like me to repeat it? I'm not going to repeat the definition, just the question. Okay.
Okay. So I read a different definition of detracking. There was just one word that was missed there, and it was the perceived abilities of students. And that's dangerous, because if we leave it up to an individual to look at a student and have an opinion of whether this student can or can't do, and then put them in a certain group or certain class, that is egregious. For a long time, our students, and particularly students of color, have been not given the opportunities to take courses that are more rigorous and that can align to them entering into college. So I'm for detracking, and I don't look at it as detracking. Let's take detracking away and just say, "Let's not track students. Let's not put them on a path that we think that they should be on."
Thank you. Ms. Way Klein?
Okay, let me say that detracking in general, or not tracking kids, is a good idea. How we did it is terrible. As a matter of fact, our current board president and our director of diversity, equity, and inclusion told the Washington Post reporter that it was a failure. But have they told us that in public? You have to read the book to find out. So we need to give our teachers the resources, the tools, and the training necessary to effectively run classrooms. We just haven't done that, and we need to do that now.
Thank you. Mr. Wang?
Yeah, I support detracking. I think we didn't do it in the traditional way, which usually has a longer runway than what we took. You know, that said, if I'm elected, I started in January and I can't go back three years and make another decision on that. So I'd be inclined to say we should work with our teachers to figure out what resources they need to make sure that we're going to make it work, because we really can't afford to have this not work. And we have the resources, we have the ability and the budget to afford it, and we should make sure that we do whatever we have to to make it work.
Thank you. And Ms. Boyd?
Yes, I support the detracking in our schools. But I do agree with Ms. Way Klein that it was rolled out kind of poorly. I have spoken with many, many teachers that just said that, you know, they were lost when it came down to implementing and actually making sure all the students got what they needed with the detracking program that they did. Now, could we have did it a little better? Of course, we could have did it a little better. We could have made sure that the teachers had support to actually provide implementation for the students, a proper implementation of the program. And then to make sure that -- I mean, that's hard to make sure all students are learning at their, you know, at where they can learn. That's a difficult task, and I will hope that in that you are providing those students with a rigorous type of learning environment, but also catering to those that may not want a rigorous learning environment.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, and we'll start with Ms. Way Klein. What are your ideas for improving school communications so that citizens, including residents without children in the schools, feel better informed and more heard?
That's a good question. I believe transparency is really important, and I think Pam mentioned this earlier, that our communications are poor. We do not tell people everything that's going on. Sometimes it's the community grapevine. We find out things that are happening in our schools, and that's not right. We need to be upfront and out there, talking to people. And we need to create mechanisms to converse with residents who do not have children in the schools. As a matter of fact, 70% of our residents do not have children in the schools. So it is really important to be out there talking to them about what's happening and the issues that might not -- that may affect them as residents.
Thank you. Mr. Wang?
It's hard to know how everybody wants to be communicated with. I think email is probably the easiest right now. I would say, get everybody's email and give them an opt-out. Don't have them opt-in, have them opt-out and see how that goes. And then you have to survey people to sort of say, "Well, how do you want to hear from us?" Like, personally, I hate getting mail, so like, that wouldn't be a good choice for me. But having periodic meetings and I think recognizing that the majority of our folks don't have kids in the schools, and we don't want to make this a transactional relationship. We all benefit from better schools, we need to reach out to the people to find out what, you know, how they want to be communicated to.
Thank you. Ms. Boyd?
Can you say that one more time?
Sure. What are your ideas for improving school communications so that citizens, including residents without children in the schools, feel better informed and more heard?
Yeah, okay, so I did a podcast on Sunday with Mark Good in regard to the levy, and he stated that he went on the website and he found a treasure trove of information, just resources and things that he didn't even know existed. So my idea is, what good is information if it's hidden or if people don't know it's there? So it's just getting it out everywhere. I must admit, our schools do not do good with communication. That is one of the pillars in which I am running on, to better hone in on how we could fix the communication with our district, just getting the information out properly and to all those that may want it. As Laura just stated, 70% of our residents do not have students in the school district, so they need to know what's going on. And how are they to know? You want their tax dollars, but you don't want to give them any information. So we need to make sure that they definitely get the information that they need.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
So I think I kind of started off with saying that I would work very hard to make sure that every resident, including those that had non-school-aged children, would have the opportunity to be on the listserv for email. And absolutely, it should be an opt-out. But additionally, I want to make one clarification. I never said that the school board did a poor job with communicating. I feel like they do a good job communicating, but effectively is where we can improve. And having effective communication not only means giving information, but also receiving information. Additionally, going to the neighborhoods, going to meet the residents where they are instead of having them come to a building that may not have enough seats for them to sit in. And additionally, not only that, but also making sure, as Doug stated, that we reach out and figure out, how would you like to be communicated?
Thank you. Mr. Wang, we'll start with you for the next question. The latest state schools report card shows that Shaker is making progress, yet we are still significantly trailing neighboring schools across the county. What do you plan to do as a school board member to promote progress, and how will you measure progress?
So it's one of those things, like everything narrowed down to one or two numbers, and we draw a lot of conclusions, and Shaker doesn't fit normal peg holes. We're a very diverse district, and, you know, compared to other diverse districts, I think we do a good job. As far as how do we do it better, I think we need to engage our teachers and our parents and our students to figure out how we can do things better. I think detracking, given enough time, is a way to make progress on that. So again, I think Shaker is not a district for everybody. It can be, seem messy, but it's been a good experience for my kids, and I think the numbers have always been kind of hard to understand.
Thank you. Ms. Boyd?
Oh, man, that's -- you want that in 60 seconds? I must say, we need to meet our kids where they are. Not all students test the same. Not all students test well. So we're taking a test score and we're actually saying, "Okay, this is your student." I have a student that actually suffers from anxiety, so she clams up every single time it's time to test. She does not do well on any type of test. It doesn't matter. Any standardized testing, she does not do well on. So how can I better show that she is actually doing well in school, you know, through her work, through the grades that she's getting in class? What best tells that story of how she's doing? So I think that we definitely can look at different ways in which to tell the stories, which is some of what the IC is doing. They're actually telling stories a little differently about how the students are progressing, and they're giving students slightly different experiences.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
So I think the report that's coming out is sort of what tries to do that. The report is measuring what matters. I think that we need to be honest with the data. I think that we need to be more transparent with the data. I think we need to present the real data so that we can look at the hardcore numbers and be able to see what areas in which we need to improve upon and have evidence-based strategies to reach those goals. Being honest with the achievement gap and being able to say, "We really need support for children that are not performing where they are." Making sure that the adults are actually looking at the data to make data-informed decisions. Making sure that we have real metrics in place at the schools so that we can hold teachers accountable, principals accountable, our superintendent accountable. So we need to be honest, we need to be transparent, and we need to communicate often.
Thank you. Ms. Way Klein?
You know, we've spent a long time, probably the last decade, tripping over ourselves, saying, "We don't fit in -- we're a square peg, we don't fit in a round hole." But Pam is right, we need to be transparent about the numbers. We see these test scores that come out and measuring what matters, and they don't -- they still match what the state is saying. We have kids, a couple of years ago, 40% of then-eighth graders that are in 10th grade right now, were not on track for Algebra I. They had to retake it in 9th grade, and 40% of them retook it this path, retaking it right now. We need to have a task force on learning to get a group of teachers together with administrators and come up with strategies to address how kids learn, how we can get them to where they need to be, and so that we can actually have them be achieving at the levels that they are able to.
Thank you. Next question, I'll start with Ms. Boyd. What are your specific ideas about how Shaker Schools can recruit, hire, and retain Black teachers?
Oh, I think that we need a pipeline straight from HBCUs directly. We definitely need representation. Our students of color need to see themselves and their teachers. They need to see that, because they need to be able to encourage, you know. It's so much. When my son was in Fernway, he was so excited because he got Mr. Q as a teacher. So it was one of those things where it matters. Those things matter, and when you don't have it or you have a low representation, it definitely impacts students.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Scott.
So I do believe that we need a pipeline. I don't necessarily agree that it has to be from an HBCU. For those of you that do not know, that's historically Black college and universities. I think that we have programs with Cleveland State University, Kent, that we can actually create that pipeline. I believe Dr. Huckshins, when he was here, tried to do that. Additionally, we need to create a culture in which they feel welcome. We need to create some type of mentoring program where, once they enter into the school district, that they will be able to get a landscape and understand how Shaker teaches, how Shaker engages, and be able to support them in that way. Culture does trump strategy. We can have all the strategy in the world if we do not allow people to feel welcome and inclusive and provide them the supports they need so that they can thrive.
Thank you. Ms. Way Klein?
So I'd like to broaden it out a little bit. I think that hiring teachers of color is important, but I think we need to broaden it out to gender and sexuality as well. All children need to see representation when they come into the classroom. And I think it also goes back to the revolving doors of leadership that we've had, the people who are in charge. People don't want to stick around. They're not interested, and we need to cultivate a system where we are welcoming, that people are rewarding people who are doing a good job, and how do we come up with strategies to retain those people?
Thank you. Mr. Wang?
I was talking to somebody who works in the district who came from the Cleveland Metro I was talking to somebody who works in the district who came from the Cleveland Metropolitan School District. And when she got the job in Shaker, she thought that like she had found Eden or something. And I think she found that it was a much tougher environment for her than Cleveland Metropolitan School District because we have a diverse community and we have very demanding parents, as we should. And they're not always well-equipped to understand that. So I do think that orientation and mentoring and belonging is is absolutely like critical for everybody to stay. And school leadership, absolutely, I agree with you, Laura, that having longer-tenured people in the buildings that where they stay for multiple years is better for continuity than a lot of turnover.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Scott. Do you think the district should work toward the goal of universal pre-K, providing all three and four-year-olds with free schooling? Why or why not?
I absolutely do believe that. Universal pre-K has been proven in other districts to be successful in ensuring that students come to kindergarten ready. I I do understand the challenges behind that, though. We have to do that thoughtfully, and we have to make sure that there is a plan in place so that we don't fumble the opportunity. Families need support in making sure that they can have transportation, they can make sure that they have support with understanding what universal pre-K is or preschool. We need to educate not only the families, but also the staff and the community. Right now, there's a lot of conversation around preschool and universal preschool. But from my meeting grease, I've heard, we don't understand. So I'm I'm in support of it. It has to be done strategically and thoughtfully.
Thank you. Ms. Wei Klein?
Yes, I don't think that you're going to find anybody up here who's going to say, no, I don't want universal pre-K. That is the goal that we should be working for. I agree with Pam that we need to be very thoughtful about how we do it. My children were lucky enough to be able to go to preschool. And I can tell you, I had two that did not read until first grade, even though they did go to preschool. And I had one that did because I have a retired teacher, mother-in-law, who worked with her because I didn't want to do it another time to have another child who couldn't read. So it is really important, and we need to figure out what the barriers to entry are so that we can get the kids who absolutely need to be there to be in the room.
Thank you. Mr. Wang?
Well, strictly defined, universal pre-K would be free pre-K for three and four-year-olds, which, according to the budget that the district published, would be roughly twelve million dollars a year. We don't have the budget, we don't have the space for it right now. So what we're doing is what I would call universal pre-K access or Obamacare pre-K, where we're trying to make sure everybody has access to pre-K. Half of our kids don't have pre-K before they get to kindergarten, and we need to get those kids into pre-K. And we need to be very intentional about this. This is not about getting pre-K for my grandkids. They're going to go to a pre-K. It's for the kids that wouldn't otherwise go. And that's the only way we can make it affordable with the way we support it in Ohio, which is, I think, last in the country in early childhood education spending. But we we don't really have the budget for it in our in our district right now.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes, I agree. I agree with all the sentiments. That was one of my holdouts for the levy. I wanted to make sure that all students that wanted to go and and participate in pre-K could. Because in Shaker, we have a very diverse socioeconomic economics. It's just a very, very vast range. You have some that could definitely send their kids to pre-K, and you have some that cannot. You have some that are actually here, and they have vouchers from Job and Family Services for their students to actually go for their kids to go to pre-K. So I just wanted to make sure that we're including those people, you know, those individuals who cannot afford it. Of course, everyone wants universal pre-K. Can we probably afford it here right now? No, we we probably can't. But we do have pre-K coming. So this sliding scale, this lovely sliding scale that is up in the air, up in the cloud, we need to make sure that it includes those individuals that really need it. Because literacy is real, our students need to be able to read, they need to be able to do a lot of things when they get in kindergarten.
Thank you. Okay, we have time for one more question. And we're going to start with Ms. Wei Klein. What is your point of view on career technical education? Are Shaker schools doing enough? What additions or changes would you like to see?
Obviously, all kinds of education is are very, very important. CTE, I think, is extremely important, and we don't do enough to highlight it. We need to provide students with information about all their options. Having been through this twice, I have a graduate and a high school senior, and I can tell you, the planning process is difficult. They don't know where to find what the options are. And I can tell you that their counselor has not been really helpful in doing that. So we need to create systems where we can provide kids with the opportunities to learn about what their options are, so they can take advantage of them. Not all kids are going to go to college. It's really clear. And so we need to provide them with opportunities to pursue other kinds of vocation opportunities.
Thank you. Mr. Wang?
Yeah, I think we do need to recognize that not everybody's going to go to college. And so having more exposure to CTE makes sense. I think the only caveat I would say is I want to make sure that it's the students and their families' decision and not us trying to steer people into, oh, you're not college material. And, you know, other than that, I think we should make sure everybody knows what all the options that they have. And and not only know the options, but try to preserve all the options that they have so that I don't know about you, but not all sixteen-year-olds know exactly what they want to do for the rest of their life. And so it'd be good to make sure that if if they thought they didn't want to go to college, and then they get to their senior year, and they go, you know what I actually do, that they're not aced out of that. So other than that, yeah, sure.
Thank you. Ms. Boyd?
Oh, I've been waiting on this question. Okay, so I have two students at home that one wants to be a cosmetologist, and my son is actually in barber college. He graduated class of twenty twenty-two. But he did not have the opportunity to do barber college when he was in school because he never really got the resources for it from his counselor. So he went after. But that shouldn't happen, right? They should try to figure out exactly what his passions are to see, okay, are you going to college? Are you not going to go to college? You know, what might you want to do if you were not to go to college? So that was never really it was never really given. For my daughter, she could have started cosmetology school this year, but it was completely swamped. It was packed. No, there was no spots left. So how can we expand that to make sure more of our students are actually getting into the programs in which they want to get into if that's what they're intending on doing with their career?
Thank you. And Ms. Scott?
So I I do agree with with everyone on the the panel. I would say that we need to have an evidence-based strategy that will be able to support the planning within the schools and the district with with creating pathways to other career technical education. It's not enough for us to say that we appreciate it. We have to give support to the teachers, to the the counselors, to the principals to be able to give them resources to create those pathways. Additionally, we need to also let the parents know about these choices. All too often, parents are left out of the conversation. And so they can't advocate for their student to be able to look at the other pathways. So throughout this whole time that we've been on this panel, one of the things that I wanted to say is, yes, our end user is the the students. But we also need to make sure that parents are engaged so that they can support their students.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to the closing statements, and we will go in reverse order. And we will start with Mr. Wang.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League for the opportunity to meet with all of you tonight. In closing, I believe I bring needed skills to the board in terms of broad board experience and working with a leader to make them more effective, financial expertise to make sure that what we do is sustainable and economically efficient. I can work with finance and audit, and I value their expertise. I spent most of the last year studying the plans that are in the levy, influenced the ultimate decision, and am running to make sure that we execute them well. I understand that as an elected official, I represent all citizens, whether they have children in the district or not. I believe in a culture of belonging with all the stakeholders, which is important and necessary to address all the many challenges and opportunities in Shaker Heights. And I believe in what Arthur Ashe said, start where you are, use what you have, do what you can. I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wei Klein?
Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate having the opportunity to speak with you. I have spent the better part of the year talking to people in the community. I met with people, parents, I met with teachers, I met with union members, I met with administrators, I met with city council members, all talking about this community. And it is really important to be out there talking to people and hearing what everybody has to say. And I think this election, certainly for people up here for two spots, none of us are incumbents, and I think that really says something about this race. I bring to the table a long history in this community, being an alum, a parent, a longtime resident, family being here for a long time, and having experience in budget, finance, building projects throughout my career. I think I would be an excellent addition to this board. So thank you, appreciate your time, and I ask you for your vote.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
So once again, thank you so much. I have fourteen years of of experience working in education. I worked for the Cleveland Metropolitan School District, managing school improvement grant funds, federal funds, supportive capital projects. I also support the diversity and equity and and inclusion for the athletic department here at Shaker. We all know that if we have strong schools in our community, that we will have strong families and strong students and and a very strong city. So it's it's very important for all voices to be heard and from every neighborhood. I want to be that voice on the the board for you. I want to be able to hear from communities like Moreland and Malvern and Sussex that do not have a neighborhood school, where where decisions are made and being and and they're being impacted because their voice is not heard. So if you elect me, I promise that I will be your voice on the board.
Thank you. Ms. Boyd?
Sure. Oh, this is the hardest job, and you don't get paid for it. It's one of those things, no one chooses to be on a board because their district is doing well or their district is doing exceptional. They find something that maybe could be done a little differently. They find ways in which that they could be an asset to their community, and they choose to run based off of that. I think my knowledge and expertise could definitely help the district a lot. I'm I'm very, very interested in a lot of things that's going on in the district, but I think we could be doing a lot of things better. It's one of those things where we give of our most important asset, which is our time, for your kids, for your grandkids, for the community. We are true advocates, and and we just want the best for our community. And that's what I want you to think about tonight. Thank you. Vote Andrea Boyd.
Thank you, candidates. Let's give the candidates a big round of applause.